Hello, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council on Wednesday, April 15th, 2020. This is our third online meeting, and the information is available on our website on how members of the public can join us. It's available now on our Larkspur City website, and we have people helping us here get you online if you need to get online and speak with us tonight. We're going to be pretty flexible about some things about allowing public comment because people are still getting used to this platform. So go ahead and log on or follow the email instructions that are on the website also about how to reach us tonight. So Allison, do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Candell is absent. Councilmember Hilmer?
Here.
Councilmember Paulson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harof?
Here.
Fairway? Here. Part two of our agenda is for public comment. This is comment on matters that are not listed on the agenda, and this is a time for people within the public to address the city council regarding items not on the agenda or that are listed as part of consent calendar. You can approach the podium, is what we usually say, but at this point, you can raise your hand within the computer webcast, and Allison can recognize you. You're limited to about three minutes to speak and five minutes if you're representing a group. I know we did receive one written public comment, which is now posted on the agenda that you can see here as we scroll up, and that is a letter that was received, I believe, yesterday or the day before yesterday from the Commons Foundation. Do I see any other member of the public, Allison, who would like to make a public comment?
We're getting a few people joining us at this time, and so I think it might be good to just reiterate. I've seen some hands raised and then lowered again quickly. So if you'd like to make public comment, I'll give a moment here for you to raise your hand again.
So anyone listening to us would like to make a public comment? Now's your time, so please let Allison know because she's running the meeting from the audiovisual component.
Okay, and I do see we have someone wishing to make a public comment. And so Joe Jennings, I will unmute you now, and you can unmute yourself on your end and speak to the council.
Welcome, Joe.
Hi, it's Joe Jennings, 208 Montavista in Larkspur, speaking for the Commons Foundation. I want to first say I want to thank you for your service in these extraordinary times. I know it's stressful for all of you, and I will be brief. We want to make sure that the video from the last meeting, not the minutes per se, that we've had people contact us with questions.
I realize, wait, Joe, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I realize I've placed you out of order because that is actually an item that is on our agenda, which is in the consent calendar. So I super apologize for that. Will you just hold your comment for a few minutes?
Sure.
Because that is an item that's on the consent calendar, so I want to make sure. I did it out of order. I apologize for that. So hold on, Joe, we'll get to you. Is there anyone else, Allison, who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
All right, and I am just checking again for any raised hands or any email to the comment@cityoflarkspur.org email address, and we have no public comment.
Okay. Sorry about that confusion there. So we'll close public comment and move to number three, which is presentations and proclamations. And we don't have any tonight. That brings us to four, which is approval of the consent calendar. Do I have any member of the council who would like to remove an item for discussion from the consent calendar? Seeing none, we do have one member of the public who would like to remove item 4.2 to discuss that, and that's where Joe's comment comes in. Apologies for this there. So would you like to make that public comment now, Joe?
Yes, thank you for letting me comment. It's Joe Jennings, 208 Montavista, speaking for the Commons Foundation. Appreciate your service in these extraordinary times, and I know that you're under a lot of pressure to balance a number of different issues at the same time. We wanted to make sure that the public understands from the videotape from the last meeting the situation with the Commons Foundation and the city. Just to be clear, we've been meeting with the city on a monthly basis for a year and a half. It's a working group. It consists of the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, myself, Joe Jennings, and Kathy Green and Jane Friddell from the foundation. We have a regular process of reviewing issues and making progress towards raising the money and building and sustaining a new library at Rose Lane. At our meeting on the 26th, we basically heard from the city that the city was putting the projects and processes related to the new library on pause for the foreseeable future. And that included the Architects RFP review, the capital improvement bond planning review, government partnering, developer RFQs review, and then the city, all of that leading to the city deciding on a financing strategy for funding the city's portion of the new library. The city also asked us to put on pause using a new fundraising document we had developed. So we agreed to pause the fundraising document use and to have further discussions with the city about that in our April 27th meeting. We just wanted to make it clear to the public that the Commons Foundation isn't on pause. We are on something of a pattern waiting for the shelter in place to end, but we can expect to continue fundraising. We're just about to crest a million dollars in pledges and cash raised, and we wanted to make sure that everyone understood that a lot's going on at the city, but we're continuing to work on getting the funds to fund, build, and sustain a library at Rose Lane. So that was just of the letter that we submitted, and we just wanted to make sure that you all understood that we understand this is a very complex and difficult time. There's a lot of economic pressure in the city. We're trying to be as flexible as possible on how we move forward to build a new safe library at Rose Lane. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Joe, and I can refer people to the public comment which is publicized on this on our website and available for others to review. Is there any further members of the public who would like to discuss that? Great, seeing none, I'll return it to the council, and I'd like to welcome Scott Candell to the meeting. Allison, did you see that?
I did, yes, thank you. You are noted as present.
Great, thank you, Scott. So anyone interested in approving the consent calendar as discussed?
I would like to...
Oops, hold on. Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, I'd like to remove item 4.4 from the consent calendar, please.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so item 4.4 has been removed for discussion. Would you like to start that?
Yes, it's a resolution to approve HDL as a consultant. I've had experience with HDL, and I would like to consider some alternatives, and I'd like to give him the opportunity to get more information about the other options available.
All right.
I'm sorry, I can go into my experiences with HDL if you'd like to, but I don't want to, you know.
I don't.
If it's not necessary.
I don't think it's necessary right now at this time when you're at this level. So Dan, is there some discussion that you would like to add to that?
At this time, Madam Mayor, I'm only aware of two significant vendors for the provision of sales tax auditing services, which is what we would like to retain HDL to do. In addition, retaining them for those auditing services, they would also provide us with an analysis of our sales tax base. The other provider is the one we've been using, which is now called Avenue. For years, they were Muni Services. They, they're a big national company, and we felt that their ability to be proactive in the local environment wasn't as strong as HDL's. As HDL is the provider of those services to the county, they have a full database of all of their sales tax, which means they can give us a more robust analysis than another vendor can because they can do more comparative analysis between agencies. HDL is, in terms of being an analytical company, offers a large suite of services. At this time, we're only proposing to retain them for the sales and these tax analyses and auditing services.
Does anyone else from the council have a question to the manager about that item 4.4 and the resolution to approve retention of that firm?
Yeah, this is Kevin. I would appreciate maybe just a little bit more detail from Councilmember Candell about his concerns.
Okay, I have had...
Is this the appropriate venue for that, Dan Schwartz, or would you rather have that Is that, is this appropriate? Yeah, I'm asking you if you feel comfortable, is this appropriate venue? Dan Hilmer's shaking his head, so, okay. All right.
I'm building on your question to the city manager. Would he like to comment further on this at this time, or would he like to have the conversation with Councilmember Candell offline?
I don't know what to, like, council. You know, like I said, in my opinion, there's only two vendors, viable vendors. We're not satisfied as your fiduciary agents for the city. Our sales tax and audit analyses are sufficient with Avenue. So we could put this out to bid. That's the only other option. I feel very confident that we're the only two vendors that will respond for this particular service.
So Scott, do you have anything you'd like to contribute to that, or that seems to...
Madam Mayor, I have a question. Is this an urgent item to be passed this evening, or would it be appropriate to continue it to the next meeting? The city manager could advise.
I think postponing at one meeting would be fine. If you postpone it out farther than that, we actually won't have anyone under contract. So we won't begin analyses.
Yeah, I'm concerned about postponing and if, because our sales tax revenue and figuring out where we fit financially is going to be key for our recovery from COVID-19 downturn. So I'd like to give you an opportunity, Scott, to just make a short summary of what your concerns are about HDL.
I'll keep it general for right now, and then I'll get, if you want me to get more specific, I will. I've had several experiences with them, both in the city of Vallejo and the city of Nevada. The city of Vallejo dealt with auditing of finances. The city of Nevada dealt more with cannabis side, which they also do consulting on. I felt that some of the information they gave to the city was not accurate, and on the auditing side, some of the mistakes, because I represented some of the people who were being audited, and some of their mistakes led to a waste of city resources in having to go back and fix those mistakes. I just didn't think it was done very professionally. I'm not saying that that would repeat itself. I just would like to know more about it and the parameters and the options that we have before going with this particular group.
Okay, so your concern is noted. Any further discussion on that? Sounds like we have items on the consent calendar. We can approve them one by one, or we can, can we do that, Scott? Can we approve them one by one, or do we have to go by the consent calendar as a whole? I think we can approve them one by one.
I would like to continue the item 4.4 to the next meeting.
And I agree with that.
Okay, so...
And I was going to say, you could take 4.1 through 4.3 separately and then take a separate action on 4.4, and it sounds like Councilmember Hilmer has moved to continue 4.4 to the next meeting.
All right.
I would second Councilmember Hilmer's motion.
And I'll make the motion, yes.
All right. All right, so the motion we have on the table is approval of the consent calendar 1.4 to 1.3. Do I have a, Allison, can you do a roll call vote now?
Councilmember Candell?
I approve, and we're 1.4.1 to 4.3, I approve.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilmer?
Hi.
Councilmember Paulson?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Harof?
Yeah.
Fairway?
Yes, so we have a separate motion for 4.4 to continue it. That was brought by Councilmember Hilmer and seconded, I think, by Vice Mayor Harof, so we can vote on that now.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Vice Mayor Harof?
Yeah.
Fairway?
No. All right, we're done with that. Now we move to the city manager's report, which is number five.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I have three items for you. First, this particular era has brought on a new age of communication in terms of myself and my colleagues. The Marin managers are speaking to each other probably two to three times a week as a group, and I wanted to particularly acknowledge Nevada City Manager Adam McGill took a leadership role that I think the mayor may also talk about when she reports out to create some messaging that we did. All the cities in Marin produce messages through their mayor to support the community. I want to thank Nevada City Manager Adam McGill. He proposed that idea, having seen it in another community, and his staff did the work that produced that video. There's a link to it on our website. Also, one of the positive benefits of this new age of interacting with the city digitally is our social media use by our community in terms of communicating with us or reading our messaging. Our analytics tell us it's up 42%. So that's, thank you, the public, for paying attention in this period, and we're going to continue to make use of those resources. And then, although I'll be talking about impacts of the COVID-19 emergency on general operations, I wanted to highlight one here that I'll mention again later, which is just, we did have a lot of folks from out of town parking in our community over the last weekend in order to go use the various trails, trailheads that are accessed. It's creating a concentration of vehicles and people in very small spaces, and so at the directive of the Public Health Official, Public Health Officer, we've put signage up, and we are actually restricting areas around trailhead entrances in terms of parking, and it will only be for Larkspur, cars registered to Larkspur until the shelter in place is lifted. So we encourage folks from other communities to find the wonderful resources that their communities offer in terms of outdoor recreation, and ask that they not come and park in some of our residential neighborhoods to access these different trails. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there questions of the council in regards to the city manager's report?
So this is Kevin. On that last item, Dan, I've actually noticed some of the signage going up, and there's a favorite trail of mine where there's now a sign that is suggesting parking restrictions. So how does that work in terms of Larkspur residents? I mean, are, you know, am I precluded from taking advantage of that trail opportunity or...
No one is precluded from using the trail. What we're trying to do is limit folks driving to that entrance to the trail. But the way we've written, the way the rules have come down, it's restricted to Larkspur residents parking in the neighborhood. We can't really do a lot beyond that.
Okay, so that helps me a lot because that suggests to me that as a Larkspur resident, I can still take advantage of opportunities to park and go run.
I have a comment, if I may.
Sure, go ahead, or...
I took Dan's nodding to...
My concern is that by closing some of the public facilities, we are funneling people into the few potential areas where people can exercise. So we are basically creating more of a problem of congestion the more of these places that we take away. So I just want us to do it thoughtfully as far as if there are areas where people can use recreational areas and still be socially distancing, that we allow them to remain open so that everybody doesn't end up walking on one or two trails that are still available. That's become...
Yeah, so just on that point, just from a personal perspective, the one trail that I use, Red River Lake, I have not seen any significant increase in usage in the last week or so, and actually, the parking's been fine. The signage is up, that's fine, too. But I, there are certainly opportunities for people to go outdoors and get exercise in ways that don't compromise, you know, the rights and needs of others, so it doesn't seem to be a problem.
So if I just reiterate two points, Madam Mayor. One is it's not our choice. This is a directive from the Public Health Official. We just are the people that have to enforce the directive. Secondly, trail is not closed. What we're telling folks is, for example, we don't want to see 20 cars parked at the end of Madrona or Baltimore Canyon so that folks can, the trail's out there. If you want to use those amenities, you need to go park in a parking lot that's still open, or some other street park that makes more sense, and you need to walk into the trail.
Exactly.
It's not closed, so...
Okay.
And that's the experience that I've had with people accessing some of our Marin County open space. I think people are acting very responsibly, so we just all have to be mindful of these requirements and the rights of others.
Okay, we'll move on to council member oral reports and comments. I'll start on the right of my screen, which is Scott. Do you have anything you'd like to report on?
I'm getting up at this time.
Okay, moves to Gabe, and you can save your Mobile Home Park ad hoc committee for a little later. So any other report?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report briefly on the efforts that Larkspur and Corder Medera are making to reach all of our constituents, all of our members. There was an article today in the Marin IJ that summarized the door hanger initiative, which was mailed out this past Friday. And so briefly, what that is, is Corder Medera and Larkspur together organized some door hangers, 14,000, which are going to be mailed to all the residents of Greenbree and Larkspur and Corder Medera, and essentially have a phone number to help people call and get information or express different needs and get support. And so this is a great use of some of the staff in parks and wrecks and others to be able to reach to the community. And specifically in Larkspur, I talked to Dick Whitley, and he mentioned that the 80 or 90 walkers were part of the people that are targeted for calls and the 10 marks. And so there's a phone number and also some outreach and some tracking, and it was all done by bulk mail. So we had discussed different possibilities of using neighborhood response groups and different volunteers, but we thought the safest way to socially distance is merely to use the post office at the cost of 18 cents a piece of mail. So it's a fairly frugal, but hopefully effective way, and so far, it seems like a lot of people have gotten this and are able to call the number, and also we're tracking it. And I wanted to really thank Dick and Dan, also our city manager and the city of Corder Medera, for putting this together with so many other things going on, like budget and the first responders and safety. So really, thank you guys for following through on this.
Thank you. I called the number and said appreciative things to that young woman who answered the phone, so somebody's answering the phone, which I thought was terrific. Dan Hilmer, anything?
Only that it was a great idea. I'm very appreciative, and many of my neighbors have commented on how helpful they found it to be.
Great. Kevin, anything?
You know, nothing to report out. I think Gabe is going to talk a little bit about the meetings we've been having with the Mobile Home folks here in a minute, so I'll defer on that. But I just want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to live in this wonderful community and how everyone that I have seen, you know, behaving responsibly, being respectful, driving their cars, being respectful to each other on the street, it's just, to me, kind of a remarkable thing. So again, to everyone who may be on the phone or listening or otherwise seeing things, I just want to, again, express my gratitude and appreciation to everyone.
Thank you. So my report is, since our last meeting, I attended the Fire Safe Marin Board of Directors meeting. I'm on that board of directors, sort of representing electives on that, and it looks like there's, we have to keep in mind that COVID-19 may be what we're focused on, but wildland fire and safety is right around the corner, and it should be something we keep present all the time. So the Fire Safe Marin was really looking at some strategies for how we can continue wildfire mitigation and education during this conflict period. Second thing, I co-chair the PDEP committee now, and the PDEP committee, which is the Public Disaster and Education and Preparedness Committee, we met last Monday, and most of the conversation was about the Marin BOAD, and the BOAD stands for Volunteer Organizations Active in Disaster. It's been a terrific opportunity to organize a lot of the nonprofits that serve our community in various ways, from food banks to animal shelters and animal rescue entities. So that was really the focus of the BOAD meeting, and if you're interested, any of the council members on being a part of their email distribution, I'd be happy to share that with you. Third thing I wanted to bring up was that the Larkspur Community Foundation, I'm the liaison for them, has now has some COVID-19 resources on the Larkspur Community Foundation page, and they are talking a lot about how they can step forward when we need them in our recovery from this to help our business community and other nonprofit communities. So take a look at their page. Second, or second to the last is, I participated on the coronavirus briefing by the Cal OES. The league put this together, and it's going to be every Monday at 2:00 p.m., and you can call in, and it was a call-in only, and you could ask questions, but it was, most of the managers and representatives of the North Bay communities could attend. I really found it very interesting. They had people from the Department of Social Services, from Health and Human Services, public health officers, all there giving updates, and particularly the California Labor, Workforce and Development Agency updates. So that's available for all of us if any of my council members are interested. Nancy Hall Bennett puts that forward to us pretty regularly. And then lastly, I participated or listened to the virtual town hall that was on Monday, which supervisor Katie Rice organized with Lisa Santora, who's our deputy public health officer, Destron Ballard, who's an ER physician at Kaiser, and also Mark Brown, who's a deputy fire chief of Marin County Fire, and they're going to be doing regular updates, too. So if anyone else is interested in finding out how you can link on to those, that was, that particular Marin update was also on Channel 27, so it could be streamed. I think we'll be able to put some of this on our website, too, to inform the public. So that was my busy times. So that brings us to public hearings, and tonight we have none, and we are now to eight business items. Business item 8.1 is the Mobile Home Committee update, and I know I have two members of our council who are on that committee, Vice Mayor Harof and Gabe Paulson, so who would like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. I can go ahead and report. So thank you, everybody, and I wanted to especially thank the council members for forming this committee back in December and working with Vice Mayor Harof and really the very constructive and productive attitude and efforts of the Mobile Home Park owners and Mobile Home Park tenants. So it's been about four months or so since we formed, and this would be our first report of some of the activities, and to keep it really... And to keep it really simple and short, I thought I would break it down into what we've done in the past before COVID nineteen. And then present, which was yesterday, Tuesday, the fourteenth, we had a meeting with the mobile home park residents and tenants and, and also the owners. And the future, where, you know, we'd like to uh, see things go, or at least what we're holding out for the future. So starting with, with the past, we uh, formed this committee and with the help of the city manager, we, we uh, formed a group of stakeholders which represented not only Marin Mobile Home Park, but also Golden Gate Mobile Home Park. And we really wanted to get a balance of the owners and the tenants and to hear their concerns. And there, there were also some people, rep- uh, one person, Doug Johnson, representing the industry. And we held about five meetings, and it was a chance to open communication lines and primarily to get what the core concerns were for the residents and, and for the owners. And then of course, you know, as that progressed, we were looking at essentially the issue of rents. Much of this was prompted by uh, thirty percent rent increase that was recent and, you know, had many different reasons. And we were exploring some third-party solutions. Uh, we were looking at the MEHT program, what the mobile home park owners might be able to do. Of course, the city of Larkspur could step in with an ordinance. Uh, there might be some county and state uh, measures. We know that there was the um, fourteen eighty-two measure that passed but did not apply to mobile home parks. So these were all exploratory meetings, and we hadn't really reached any firm conclusions. So that's the past. And part two is, is the present, so then COVID nineteen hit, and like this meeting, we knew it would be very difficult to meet. But again, I'm really grateful for people's willingness to do an online format and their patience, and, and we did have that meeting yesterday. And essentially, the issues that, that came up were, well, first, from the preliminary meetings, we saw that Golden Gate Park had some very different concerns, and even within the Marin Golden, uh, Marin uh, Mobile Home Park community, there, there were, you know, various concerns. But what most of the stakeholders said yesterday was that they're anticipating, or there's a scheduled seventy-five dollar rent increase coming up in June. So with all that's happening now, and all of them did make their rent payments, I believe, in, in the park for the month of April, they were really concerned that this was not the time to do a scheduled rent increase. And for some tenants, this represents five percent uh, increase, and for some, it represents closer to ten percent because there's a range, and, and the mobile, mobile home park owners would like to standardize people by doing a flat rate increase. So that was the chief concern, and the owners responded saying that they, they would consider postponing that seventy-five dollar increase, the exact amount of time, and other conditions were not finalized. But we left the meeting seeing that this was a, a term to negotiate, and our request from them was to clarify policy and submit that to the, to the ad hoc committee so that we could review it and, and see that it's agreeable to all the owners, and that would really get us through the short-term needs. And then the, the long-term, we really hope that when shelter in place is lifted and people go back to work, and the city also understands its financial positions and how we can commit resources and so forth, we can really revisit that. So we haven't scheduled another meeting, but we're awaiting the recommendations from the owners, their, their policy, and we'll report on that as well. Uh, so, so basically, um, I think it's Vice Mayor Haroff and my recommendation to the council that we uh, consider this short-term solution, and if it's agreeable to all, that we allow that to be the interim solution for the, the, you know, COVID nineteen period in shelter in place. And then to give us the time to re- report back when conditions are, are better understood and there are less uncertainties.
Thank you. Before, before he answers Dan's question, Kevin, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think that's a, a pretty fair summary. The only, the only thing that I would add is that, uh, you know, although I think the conversation that we've had is focused on um, uh, working through a kind of a s- a short-term um, helpful approach. Um, we're also mindful that there, you know, we're, we're going to need to focus on a long-term uh, solution to the concerns that everyone has. It's difficult to do that because in the short-term, everything is kind of up in the air. Um, so that's why we're focused in the way that we are in our conversation. Um, but I think Gabe has given a fair summary of, of where we are. But this is going to be a, 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 a long-term uh, process.
Okay, I saw Dan Hilmer raise his hand, do you have a question?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and also thank you to Gabe and Kevin for all your uh, hard work and sensitive, thoughtful consideration in all of these meetings. My question really is to Dan Schwartz and maybe Sky. Would it be appropriate that we clarify our authority in all of these matters before we uh, start to consider outcomes?
So can I, if I, if I could just interject on, on that, that, that is an issue that has been part of the conversation. Um, we're really focused on um, creating solutions that are um, the result of private negotiations, not necessarily the result of the inaction of ordinances or other formal administrative uh, actions on the part of the other city. There may be, there may be a role for the city to play in a more formal way, but I think if we can create solutions through negotiation among the parties, which is where we've been focused on, um, that will be the best outcome, and I think that's what we're trying to accomplish.
I'm very grateful for your uh, feedback there. My question, follow-up, would be, uh, would Councilmember Paulson's remarks be considered consensus remarks?
Uh, Sky, can you weigh in on that?
Madam Mayor, Sky hasn't really been particularly involved. Maybe we need some clarification on what Councilmember Hilmer is asking.
Well, I just want to know if I'm, what I'm hearing is a report on a consensus among the various interests versus a suggestion based on attendance at, uh, at a, at a meeting.
Um, if I may speak, uh, I've, I've attended the meetings and monitored the, monitored them. I think what Councilmember Paulson is alluding to is that he and Vice Mayor are particularly in this last, most recent meeting, but also increasingly in previous meetings, have just taken on the role of facilitating conversations that may not be taking place. Um, and I think the report that Councilmember Paulson gave you, including some specific details about um, things that the owner of the park may or may not do, and things the residents of the park may or may not want, only reflects the facilitated conversation.
Right. My, my uh, interest in this is only to make sure that we understand where the consensus lies between the uh, tenants and the owners versus what might be considered good ideas to, for the council to consider forward, because our uh, authority may vary, given um, well, that.
Right, and that, and that, and that, that's a helpful observation, but I uh, just to clarify, you know, I think as uh, the city manager pointed out, our, our focus has really been on facilitating a process. Um, and to help the parties reach um, a resolution um, on their own. So I don't, I don't think there's a con- yeah, I don't think there's a, I don't think, there's not a consensus on substance. There is, I think there's a little bit of a consensus on process, but that's about it.
Well, I'm, my concern lies with uh, our meetings are public record, and that we clarify exactly where we, where our authority lies and where the uh, process lies. Uh, because I would hate, uh, not like this to be um, confused.
I understand what you're asking, Councilmember Hilmer. So um, almost everything that Councilmember Paulson represented to you is um, only things that were discussed by the parties present, and all parties understand that. And I've been quite adamant with them throughout this process, that a lot of the things they're talking about, the city has no authority over.
I mean, be- these meetings are streamed, so I just want to make sure that we're clear about where we are in the process.
So this might be um, something to, uh, for the ad hoc committee to contemplate and to report back about um, process at, at our next meeting?
Oh, we'll continue, we, we, we will continue to do that, absolutely. Um, but I think the, the, the discussion we've had here tonight is an accurate representation of where the conversation's been going. And um, and I, I would reiterate what our city manager uh, just said. Um, we are facilitating, um, we are not uh, driving the boat. Um, we are working with stakeholders in order to uh, reach a uh, a sensible resolution of this issue in light of all of the interests that these private parties have.
Uh, I think it sounds, it sounds like um, keeping uh, Dan Hilmer's suggestion in mind, you might be um, a- able to uh, to uh, report a little bit uh, more thoughts about that at our next meeting. Doesn't sound like you have an ad, a mobile home, an ad hoc committee uh, meeting scheduled, so probably after the next scheduled one.
No, but we do, we do have some action items that um, that the parties are um, uh, are, are being asked to move forward with. Um, they haven't at this point, because we just had the meeting yesterday, and that's when the little question was made. So um, the people will be moving forward. Um, and we will, we will continue to act in a facilitated role.
Great.
Madam Mayor, I would also request that if uh, appropriate, that the city attorney weigh in on a comments made during a meeting this evening and provide any guidance that might be helpful to uh, uh, keeping us within the guardrails that we have.
Okay.
Yeah, I can certainly, I, I will, I will do that going forward, and for tonight, I think just to reiterate what I've heard, um, is that the ad hoc committee has been taking a facilitating role um, in a discussion between um, tenants and property owners and their representatives. Um, and thus far, city action is, is not something that has been part of the conversation. Um, last fall, uh, and so members of the public who are interested, who haven't been following this closely, would be able to refer back to previous um, reports that were part of city council agendas that described um, both changes in state law and powers that the city has to regulate the um, the, the mobile home and RV rental markets. Um, and so if, so from what I've understood at this time, no city action is being contemplated. Instead, the city, the ad hoc committee is, is helping to facilitate a conversation. Um, and they, if, if those conversations are unable to produce mutually agreeable results, then there may be some future consideration about whether or not there's a role for the city to take um, in that relationship.
I think that was pretty clear. Thank you for weighing in like that. For those of you who, this person just talking was our city attorney, Sky Woodruff. I know he doesn't come up on camera, so I just wanted people to know who that was. Um, all right, I think we answered that question, and we'll keep it in mind moving forward. Um, moving to point, uh, eight point two, which is cancel, council and staff committee appointments. Um, do I have a staff report on that?
Uh, just very briefly, Madam Mayor, this is primarily uh, an item for the council, but um, the uh, voters of Marin recently approved the funding for the Marin Wildlife Prevention Party. Um, this is the entity that's going to help mitigate the threat of wildfire throughout the county. And uh, the entity was put in place late last year, late last calendar year, but no effort was made to appoint a board until it was known whether there would be funding for the entity. Now that we know there's funding, uh, there's a need to make an appointment with the board of directors. Uh, additionally, the way that joint powers authority is written, there's a committee below the board that's made up of staff, of technical advisors, whose role is to uh, put together the operational plan and make recommendations about a budget uh, to the board of directors. And so we need you to make staff appointments there. And then lastly, um, given the dynamic and fluid circumstances we find ourselves under for uh, dealing with the COVID nineteen emergency, following past practice, I'm asking that the council appoint an ad hoc committee to work with me um, on financial matters. Um, this is so that between council meetings, I have two of you to uh, sit down with me and go through some of the implications of the things we're analyzing so that we're better prepared to bring it forward to the council and the public.
So I, uh, so to summarize, we have to do three appointments. One is for uh, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority Board of Directors, which is one director and one alternate, which are members of the city council. Second, uh, we need to appoint two staff members. The Wild, Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority Operations Committee, and the suggestion is city manager um, and the Director of Public Works. And the third is council ad hoc committee on financial matters. And this committee in the past has been the mayor and the vice mayor. Uh, Larry Chu retired from that role last year, so with the council's approval, I will take one at a time. So let's go with Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority Board of Directors. Do we have a nomination or an interest from the council on that?
May I ask a question, question, Madam Mayor? Or the city manager?
Yes.
Uh, uh, Dan, how would you see this in context uh, relative to the flood zone, the uh, governance and, and process, given that uh, I, I don't understand a plan before we uh, move forward? Uh, in that, in that instance, there was a fee that was passed with really no plan in place. And, and therefore, we, we found ourselves uh, gaming against other jurisdictions uh, on how the, the things played out. I would hate to find ourselves in a position where um, we're left at the mercy of, of the Board of Supervisors acting in, as a uh, wildfire prevention authority, and then playing one juris- one local jurisdiction off, off of another uh, as to how monies are spent and how the plan has developed.
Do you want to comment on that?
Yes, would you like me to respond, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Um, so the Flood Zone Nine is an advisory board to the Board of Supervisors, which retain all authority over the flood zone disposition of money and implementation of a plan. Uh, Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority is a joint powers authority of which Larkspur is a member. Um, and has uh, equal standing to all other members on the board. Um, there are times actually in the provision of that document where there's weighted voting, uh, and there's times when there's voting, one member, one vote. Um, the Board of Supervisors just is a side as a relatively modest uh, place on the Board of Directors of the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, because the county is a limited player in the provision of uh, in Marin, and the basis for being on the board is if you uh, are a provider of fire prevention services. Uh, Larkspur now through Central Marin Fire, uh, previously on its own, is a provider of that service, and so hence we have a seat at the, the table. Um, I don't think it's entirely fair to characterize or suggest that Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority doesn't have a plan. Uh, in fact, the, the item, as it was placed in front of the, there's had categories that the money would be spent in. Um, and some of that money being spent directly for boots on the ground to uh, clear brush, clear fuel uh, that could lead to wildfire. A portion of that money is dedicated to uh, education and information for the community, and a portion of it is dedicated to property inspection. Um, and in fact, uh, member agencies right to um, take the inspection money and use it themselves if they feel they have an inspection program locally that's better suited than uh, having that uh, service provided on a countywide basis. I, I feel very comfortable that these are very different operations and that, that concern that this money won't be implemented in a strategic way isn't, isn't founded.
I apologize for any unfair characterizations. I just want to make sure that there's a plan in place and that this is an implementation exercise.
Yeah, and the board of directors are implementing that plan also.
Yeah, so if I could just interject very briefly, the model here, this is a joint powers authority, which is different from the way flood control issues are being managed. It's much more, in my mind, it's much closer to the model that we've all signed off on with MCE Clean Energy. Joint Powers Authority has an independent board. It will be directing things in a very similar kind of governance model and the kind of advisory model that we have with flood control. So that actually gives me a lot of reassurance that there will be greater successes because of its independence and the inability of different jurisdictions to kind of take charge of things.
I appreciate your comments, Dan. Thank you very much.
So knowing that, do we have a member of the council who is interested in representing Larkspur as the one director? Gabe Paulson's waving his hand. And I've spoken with Gabe, he's very interested in this. Is there anyone else?
I'd be interested in an alternate position.
All right, anyone else interested in the alternate position? Okay, it looks like we have two members who are interested, one being Gabe Paulson as the director and the alternate, Dan Hillmer. Is there a motion to accept those?
I so moved.
I say.
All right, Scott Candell seconded that. We'll do a roll call vote, I guess, on this one.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hillmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson? Vice Mayor Harof?
Yes.
Fairway?
Yes. The second one is to appoint one member to the operations committee of that and one alternate. And the recommendation by the staff is city manager, Ann Schultz, and our public works director, Julian Skinner. And I would agree with that. So.
I'm moved.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hillmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson? Vice Mayor Harof?
Yes.
Fairway?
Yes. And lastly, the council ad hoc committee, which we have already a standing committee on this for financial matters, involves two council members and the suggestion is we.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, just to clarify, we do not have a standing committee. Any committee has a different set of law that governs it. This is the ad hoc.
All right, thank you for the reminder. An ad hoc committee that meets on occasion and in the past, the mayor and the vice mayor. My suggestion is we would keep it that way unless there's further comment. No? I would also, I'm also very encouraged to realize that our reaching out to emeritus council member Larry Chu has decided, has accepted our invitation to be a consultant for us as needed. So he has a long legacy of financial history and information about the city, which I think will be invaluable in this coming time. So he has agreed to step in as asked.
He will be a member emeritus.
Member emeritus. So do we need a vote on this also, Sky?
Yes, I'd recommend taking a motion and a vote on it just to confirm.
Okay. Who would like to move that?
So I'll move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Allison?
Councilmember Candell?
Oops, I think he dropped off on my screen.
We may have lost him for this vote, so I'll move on to councilmember Hillmer.
He's there.
Councilmember Paulson? Vice Mayor Harof?
Yes.
I'll return to councilmember Candell.
Yes, thank you.
Fairway?
Yes. Great, thank you. Allison, before we go further, since I would like to see if there's anybody who's joined the meeting that has a public comment, and that's our last chance for that.
Yes, we are requesting public comment for item eight point one or eight point two at this time. It may have passed. I know someone mentioned they may have a comment or they just noticed that public comment wasn't taken. So at this time, if you could raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment, we will call on you.
It's an awkward process we're engaged in and sometimes we misstep. So is there someone with a public comment?
Let's see, I'm just waiting, giving a moment for a hand to raise or an email to come in. And at this time, we don't have one.
So thank you for that reminder. It's maybe at the next meeting, I'll put a little note to remember to ask for public comment on our business items. So we're now to business item eight point three, update on city activities in response to COVID-19. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This presentation will be a brief in order to turn to the financial update, which will focus on more of the implications that we're beginning to deal with. We have been busy, although I feel like some semblance of routine is settling in for the staff and that we at least are finding our rhythm in this new environment and new world that we're operating in. We spent a lot of administrative time over the last two weeks since you last met, making sure that we were fully in compliant with a number of federal regulations that had come down, particularly with how we are managing our people in terms of their rights, in terms of leave and in terms of the challenges they're dealing with at home. Just like I know every business owner's been dealing with the same new sets of regulations. As I mentioned, we are constantly monitoring what the public health official decides and issues out. And so most recently, that was the parking restrictions around the trailheads. But it's almost, I'd say, every three or four days, a big discussion countywide about a possible new issue that needs to be addressed. And we get these communications from the public health officer and we deal with them. Since you last met, one of the burgeoning concerns in our six county collective was the presence of short-term rentals, Airbnb, for example, and that some of those were still in operation and having a lot of turnover within neighborhoods. And so there's been a prohibition by the public health officer. Now in Larkspur, we already have a prohibition against short-term rentals, so that wasn't an immediate effect for us. But those are the types of things that keep coming down that we're dealing with. We now have two staff members fully dedicated to communications, and that includes not just updating our website and our social media, but it's monitoring what's coming into the city and making sure that we're being responsive. That's on a global level. Also, in particular, in our two virtual departments right now, recreation, that's, those are pretty much communication operations and they're still very busy doing what they can to serve the public remotely. Thank you to councilmember Paulson for highlighting the door hanger effort. That's the first of what I think will be many joint efforts between the recreation staffs of Corder Madarin, Larkspur, as they try to find a way to give back during this period when a lot of their facilities are not available to the public. And so they have really limited opportunity to do the type of service they're accustomed to. We continue to move forward with our essential public works projects. Those are primarily our work on the Bonner Bridge and also roadwork. We just put out or bid our roadwork, pavement work for the summer. We were doing ramp installations on the South Aliso. Those were actually essential and necessary for us to legally move forward with our pavement work. We had some aesthetic and landscaping work in that project. We did postpone that work to recognize that it was less essential. And I want to acknowledge that our contractors remain in dialogue with us constantly about what's appropriate and not appropriate during this time. We started doing a lot of contingency planning, as I imagine a lot of businesses are doing now, as we wait to find out what the next phase looks like when the shelter in place orders are either lifted or amended. And so we want to be ready to offer services that we currently cannot offer. And that's particularly with respect to serving the public in some of our facilities. So a lot of discussion going on there, asking a lot of new questions about risk in the management of people in different environments that we've never had to ask before. So this has been a good time for us to study those issues and really work on them. Those are the things that are mostly occupying us. We're still providing permits on a limited basis when folks qualify under the stay-at-home order. We're still doing some of our higher level planning. This is a good time for us to catch up on some of that work. So with that, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions. And of course, we've been very busy doing fiscal modeling, but we'll save that for the next agenda item.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council who has a question about COVID-19 response? Yes, Gabe?
Hi, thanks, Dan. I think that question I raised earlier, I don't remember the city planning. I think you had mentioned that there were some changes or digitizing or whatnot. I don't remember that part of the report. Are they, you know, still pursuing? I guess there's the permits and whatnot. I'm wondering if there's anything else.
So while we are facing some tremendous financial constraints, one of the areas that we are continuing to fund is our investment in new technology. So I think what councilmember Paulson might be referring to is we were in the process of soliciting proposals from the providers of technology in the area of building and planning, in particularly the software that can make that operation more efficient. And we've continued with that process. We're actually getting very close to soliciting those proposals. And so the planning staff and the building staff have been busy with those, that process in particular. We view that as an important long-term investment, particularly now as we try to transition to a more online service provider.
Other questions?
Only a comment, Madam Mayor. I'd like to express our gratitude to the staff and the city manager for their commitment and dedication to the city during these challenging times. I know things are changing daily and I have been following and I really respect the way that morale has been kept at a high level and the way that the city manager has kept everybody informed and really conducted a thorough analytic approach to the way we're dealing with this.
Comments are duly noted. Any others? Allison, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on item eight point three?
Yes, we received a public comment via our e-comment form for item eight point three. Commenter is Kevin Carroll of 2130 Redwood Highway. And his comment is, you mentioned short-term rental ban. What about the two RV parks in Larkspur that have short-term rentals? End of comment.
I don't, do we know anything about that or we might need to have some time to investigate that?
I'll take that comment under advisement, Madam Mayor, and look into it.
Yeah, I don't think we have an answer to him today, but that's something we have to, we can look into. Anyone else? Okay.
No further public comment.
Thank you. Moving to eight point four, which is the city financial statement. And before we do that, I'd just like to tell the council that at the last council meeting, Dan Hillmer and Gabe Paulson, I mean Scott Candell, both asked for a an agenda item of the Zimmer Trust. And I have asked for that to be on our next agenda, our next agenda, which is May six. So look forward to that as we begin our really in-depth financial and budget discussions. Got really big all of a sudden. We did as agenda items, so just so you know. Okay, we are now on preliminary fiscal impact of COVID-19, which is the city's financial update.
So this is the first time I've done a PowerPoint. So it turns out when I open the PowerPoint, I can't see you anymore. So I'm hoping you can all see the PowerPoint on your screen now.
We can, I can, and I can see all of you all.
Okay. So thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm present, as you can see, also present in terms of being here on audio is our administrative services director, Kathy Orm, who is doing all the heavy lifting to analyze the impact of the COVID-19 emergency on the city. I just want to acknowledge and thank Kathy and then make you aware that she's available to assist with any questions you may have as we go through this presentation. And please feel free to interrupt me as we go along. I'm happy to answer questions throughout the presentation. But tonight, you've heard from your last meeting that you would like to start getting a perspective of how the city's in the current environment. You've heard me make reference a few times that we project a billion dollars in lost revenue through the remainder of this fiscal year. Kathy and I remain confident that that's a good projection for the remainder of this. One of the challenges that we're having right now, and anyone in our line of work is having, is that data is coming in at a slow pace. And it's actually paced this time of year in terms of our revenue stream. And generally, what we do in a normal year is we take the information we have available and we analyze it with the benefit of trend analysis. We're able to sort of look back historically and then look at the data we have in front of us and make reasonably good projections of where we're headed for the remainder of the fiscal year or into the next fiscal year. We don't have any trend analysis for this situation. And so now what we're having to do is take data that comes in and model as best we can against assumptions that we're trying to build, particularly with respect to sales tax. We're taking past auditing reports and past analytics and we're trying to them to develop ideas about where we think we're headed. So as we go through this presentation tonight, we've kept the figures and the information at a very high level because the deeper dive that we're going to adopt a budget, some of that data isn't yet available to us in April and it'll be available to us as we move forward. So with that, one of the first, what's some of our local impact is financing is in our sales tax sector. As you'll see on the screen now, roughly half of Larkspur's sales tax base is in these three segments, which are restaurants, gas stations, and miscellaneous retail. And in a given quarter, the amount of sales tax that these sectors bring in moves as a percentage, depending on how busy they are in that given sector. But typically, our restaurant industry lands as 20 to 30% of our quarterly sales tax. Service stations or gas stations are actually nice sales tax generators for any community. Not only are you receiving sales tax on the things that they typically sell in convenience stores, we actually get sales tax on gas. So we have a suffering there. Miscellaneous retail covers all those smaller shops around town that are in the downtown, those that are the smaller retail outlets in our shopping centers. There are one or two larger vendors that are in the miscellaneous retail category as well. But as you can see, these are the three components that make up roughly half our sales tax. And these are the three industries really suffering, three segments of sales tax base that are really suffering in the COVID-19 situation. Fiscal year 1920 is our current fiscal year, which ends on June 30. We budgeted sales revenue as a $2.8 million. So we are, when we're mulling that $1 million loss, roughly $700,000 to $800,000 of that loss is coming out of the sales tax. In addition to the, the hard-hit segments that are identified, one of the areas we're not certain about is the impact that COVID-19 is having on our business-to-business sales community. We actually have, particularly at Markspur Landing, a handful of key businesses that make their sales to other businesses. And so it's a little more challenging for us to, at this time, until we collect some more data, it's a little more challenging for us to know what's playing out in those individual industries. We, I literally was on some of their websites today getting some contact information and, and planning to reach out to them and just group what this looks like for them because I really don't think I can otherwise model at all what some of those impacts are. Also wanted to underscore, those of us who do economic development modeling often look at daytime and nighttime population. Right now, Markspur has a large sheltering in place daytime population, but in normal circumstances, we have a very modest daytime population. A lot of our daytime folks are commuters or working out of the community. But what we do have, just like any community, is a large number of employees who come into the community and spend money during the day. For Markspur, that's a lot of service industry workers and they're not here, so they're not spending money. And we don't yet know what that really will mean for the local economy.
Are there, would you like to take questions along the way?
Sure.
Is there any question about where we are? Yes.
My question is just the hotels. Is that in, which section was that, would that be in?
Yeah, so hotels are coming up. So the one major hotel is the courtyard by Mary at the town of Markspur Landing. The hotels don't generate a lot of sales tax for us only because the courtyard does do some modest sales in, in the food industry and out there. But transient occupancy tax is its own category that we'll bring up shortly.
Okay, go on.
Okay.
Dan, I wasn't quite clear on the comments about the daytime population. So it sounds like two competing possibilities. One is service workers who come in and spend are not there reducing income or sales tax, but people who are staying at home and may purchase food or whatever that they would do in San Francisco or Oakland may be increasing. Is that correct summary? So it could be going in either direction.
I'm correct. I don't know what the balance of those impacts are.
And that may be hard data to find because many of our takeout restaurants are only operating four hours a day from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., not during the day, earlier daytime hours. So go on. Local economy.
So councilmember Candace's question, which was about our hotel tax or our transit occupancy tax, a mixed message with respect to fiscal year 1920. We know we're going to realize less revenue than we would have hoped for transient occupancy tax revenue stream. But Kathy and I historically budget extremely conservatively for this category. And so for several years now, the, the hotel tax has come in higher than we've budgeted and we're on that track again this year. We were on track to, to well exceed $800,000 in TOT. We collected $600,000 through February. That might be it. We might be done collecting TOT. There just may not be any significant revenue stream. But based on our budget, we can tell you that we know we collected three quarters of hotel tax in fiscal year 1920. What we don't know at all is when and if we'll see life in the hotel tax again. So we're assuming that for fiscal year 2021, this will not be a significant revenue stream for us. I'm pleased that we just saw our property tax receipts for April and they do, they do look to be in projection, but we won't be entirely certain till June. That's standard. There's usually a final true-up payment, if you will, in June as folks who've paid late come in. And of course this year, some of those late payments may be approved for, for deferral. And so we don't totally know if we'll see 100% of our projected property tax, but what we've seen come in does look on, on target for what we expected. We're being tied by the tax collector to budget property tax coming in relatively the same next year. So that's at least one set of positives. Really know entirely what the impacts from decisions the governor or the legislature make will be in Markspur. There's been much talk about the recently announced sales tax deferral program. They're probably aware of this. If you have less than $5 million in sales, you can defer $50,000 in sales tax payments to the state and local entities. Deferral is a good word because it means we're supposed to get that money someday. But what we have us to really clear is what happens if that business goes away? Is the state going to backfill that deferred sales tax to a local entity? If they're not, then we'll realize losses against those sales. And that's just something we won't know. We can't model, but it is going to impact us in some way, shape, or form. And then just wanted to note, I think the legislature is still experiencing some pressure to look at property tax deferral in, in the December payment. And, you know, I can only tell you that one of the arguments I've heard repeatedly is that the agencies, the government entities that are reliant on property tax can borrow money to, to make themselves whole when the deferral arrives. We're already looking at the possibility that we'll have to borrow some money to make it through the crisis. And so there's only so much borrowing capacity for the city. And it shouldn't be casually thought of as an idea to impose upon us that we would have to borrow more money. Concerns that we are in category. We have no idea what our building and planning permit activity will look like. It's obviously relatively quiet now. As we move to some sort of reduced shelter in place or some sort of modified rules, what will be allowed in terms of building and planning and how comfortable will people be commissioning projects on their property? Not surprisingly, gas tax is down. People aren't driving and the cost of gas is down considerably. So while that's a modest revenue stream for us, it is part of the plan we created to maintain these newly paved streets. And so we feel comfortable, we can handle a short-term disappearance of gas tax revenue. But if that's a long-term situation, we'll have to rethink our strategies around maintenance of our newly paved roads. Over the last few years, we've received a lot of positive feedback from the community for taking the sales tax money that the county provides for its parks measure, its measure A. This was money that was primarily for the large county parks, but did include some money going to the local agencies. We use that money to fix our small neighborhood parks. It's been the money we've used to improve playgrounds, improve safety, and enhance the beauty of our smaller parks. And we just have to assume at this point, because that's a sales tax revenue stream, it's probably not available to us in any significant amount for the next year or two. So projects that we had scheduled will almost certainly need to be pushed out. And then we have no idea if state grants are available. The state's going to face its own fiscal challenges here and that's one area they may need to curtail, the availability of funds to local government. So we're preparing for that probability. We're not heavily reliant on local state grant money, but from time to time, we identify opportunities in state grant money and, and just some concern that may not be there. I didn't want to, that would be a W data.
Alcohol sales are up. Up. My screen is locked. Is anybody else's?
I threw in, yeah, internet's.
Dan, you're gone out.
Tech, one moment.
Oh.
Are we okay, Ken?
Our motion to tech out in city halls, chambers, I see. So you were on to alcohol sales. You've jumped ahead a couple.
Yeah.
One more. It's on our screen. There you go. That's where you stopped.
Can you hear me?
Yes, and that's where you stopped. So that's good.
I think we had a blip in the internet. So we have a little server problem here at City Hall. Sorry about that.
You are a little grab voice, so it is a little, it is coming in a little rough.
I'm blaming that on the internet too. Maybe it's my off to do future ones on my phone.
Stop smoking.
Yeah. Maybe I sound cool. I don't know. So yes, I did, I'm being a little playful, but at the same time, the council's heard me say before that a portion of our sales tax base is alcohol sales. That's just the reality of Markspur. If you drive around town and you look at some of our retailers, you would recognize that alcohol sales play a role in that. And alcohol sales are up nationally quite a bit. So we might expect a little in the positive direction because of that. Additional concerns that we're dealing with, a reminder that we are very careful about our cash for Markspur. So although at times in our audit report and budget, we may show a fairly large amount of cash, the cash we've been holding for the last few years is in use to make sure that our major projects are moving forward. We pay bills and then we wait to be reimbursed. And we currently have three major programs where we're spending a lot of money and then we have to wait for reimbursement. The one I talk about most is the Bonner Bridge. We pay for all of the bills and then for the construction costs, we are reimbursed for 88 and a half percent of construction costs. We have to submit our invoices to CalGrants and then wait for reimbursement. We're doing everything we can to keep our on that tight, but that project has to continue even while we try to manage the impacts of these revenue losses. Our road rehabilitation program, that's our measure B program, as we often call it, we actually pay out of the general fund for the entire program. And then periodically as invoices are processed, we send them to the bond trustee who reimburses the general fund for the outlay of cash. So as an example, we're currently in the process of preparing a reimbursement request for 1.3 million from our bonds. But at this moment, there's 1.3 million in cash from the general fund that's been laid out to finance road rehabilitation. That's, that's just the nature of the way those programs are set up and there creates an additional stress to the city as we navigate the current situation. On a smaller scale, we fronted the cost of improvements to the Markspur Marina, a longtime part of the city, that we have infrastructure that the city owns that's related to the Markspur Marina. And we have a reimbursement arrangement with the homeowners that enjoy the Marina. And we're currently fronting costs there. We will ultimately be reimbursed there. But in total, it's, it's using a double, I haven't heard of for us to have $2, $3 million out that we're waiting to be reimbursed on when we're running these larger projects. So we have to still make that happen with the increasing constraint that the dollars aren't coming in at the pace we're accustomed to.
So Dan, I see Scott has a question.
Dan, do we have the authority, if we wanted to slow down or delay some of these projects, to keep from having that negative cash flow or the, the lag until we get reimbursed if we do have some fiscal needs that are not going to be met by our budget?
It'd be difficult to slow the bridge down, given the nature of the way that program is funded. And we might pay significant penalties if we did that. That would outstrip the benefit. If we reached the point where we were concerned that we could put rehabilitation program, that's our project and it's our bonds that are ultimately reimbursing us. So we could conceivably slow that project down, although at this time I feel comfortable we can continue to do it. It just puts a lot of additional pressure on Kathy and me to maintain a significant amount of cash in the city's treasury.
Thank you.
So we're still sitting idly by and wringing our hands, although there have been times I've been wringing my hands. We're developing a plan and a plan has two goals. Yes, to July 1, 2021. And then goal two is get us to July 1, 2020, I'm sorry, 2021, and then 2022. Those are the starts of fiscal years for us. At this time, based on what we're reading from forecasters that we rely on, there's a strong feeling that if we can get through the next two fiscal years, we should at least reach a point of stability where we have a better understanding of what the economy will look like moving forward. So at this time, what we're trying to do is model what we think our revenue streams are going to look like for the next two fiscal years and come up with strategies to cope with the economic hit that we've realized. So to that end, how do we get to July 1 of 2021? Kathy and I at this time are assuming that revenues will drop by $3 million based on taking what we see happening and looking at past data. And as I cautioned at the beginning of the presentation, there's lags in the data arriving to us. That's the nature of the way taxes flow. So we're really putting our best estimate out there, trying to be conservative at this time. Our hope is we're being too conservative and that revenue loss is less than that. And we're certainly monitoring every cash flow to see if we've missed something, if there's something that's going to take a hit that we hadn't anticipated. To put the $3 million loss in perspective, that's a loss of 17% revenue for the general fund. So we need to figure out a way to function as a city with 17% less funds coming in. There is no one-size-fits-all solution for us. We have to do it through a mix of strategies and I'll talk a little about what we're analyzing now. One is how much can our reserves tolerate in terms of contributing to the operation of the city without jeopardizing the long-term fiscal security of the city? Reserves are there for a reason and that's to get us through these difficult times. And the council has always adopted a very strong reserve policy and insisted that 25% of the general fund be held in reserve. We're actually above that mark now, but we're above that mark because we've been holding the extra cash to allow us to be fluid for the, for the bridge and the other projects. So when we talk about pumping reserves into operations, we're really focusing on that 25% mark. So when we talk about pumping reserves into operations, we're really focusing on that 25% mark. So for the current fiscal year, that's roughly $4.4 million that we're holding in reserve that was dedicated by the council to helping the city survive just this sort of thing. So the million dollar shortfall that we're going to realize in this current fiscal year, we're drawing heavily on reserves to help us ride out the fiscal year. It give us time to build strategies based on what we see as the long term implications for the city. The other thing is that we'll probably be talking with the council about our transient occupancy tax fund. The council has a policy that from our hotel tax, for every dollar of hotel tax that comes in, a 10 cents of that dollar is put into the transient occupancy tax fund. The policy purpose of that fund is to give the council money to fund things like the contribution we make to the Chamber of Commerce. The contribution we make to the entities in the community that support the arts and to support activities that bring visitors into our community. And you've used it to discuss plans to target one time investments here and there for the business community, whether they be large or small. We've used that fund. We actually do activity in the transient occupancy tax fund for several years. While we were rethinking our strategies and during that time, that fund built up. So there is a reserve in that fund that could help us during this period when the Marriott is not the courtyard by Marriott has not seen the number of people staying at the hotel that they would see in normal times. So we'll be analyzing that reserve. We're also looking at the reserves and some of the other funds that the council created by policy so that we can identify those for you for your discussion as to whether you want to some of that money to help us survive during this period. In addition to looking at reserves, we're also developing plans to defer and delay. Because we have that lag in data, what we'd like to first do is try to defer and delay our costs that we normally incur in the first quarter of our fiscal year. That will give more time for information to flow into the city so that we can start to understand where we where our situation is and where we're headed. I've talked with the other managers throughout the county. I think that they're all coalescing around this idea. And coalescing around the idea of sharing as much data in this area as possible so that we can build robust models together. The other, of course, question is, what do we have on the schedule for the next year that can go out to a future year? So at this time, the department head team is busy evaluating all of its operations and all of its projects. And to keep it in simple parts, I've asked them to think about what do we need to do versus what do we want to do? And by what we need to do, I'm talking about those mandated activities or those activities that relate to maintaining public safety. For those want to do's, we have to ask ourselves, are those things we want to do that could happen two years from now when we may be in better standing financially? So they're going through that analysis now, preparing those lists so that you can have those policy discussions during your budget process in May and June. And of course, the difficult thing that we needed to start planning for and talking about is how we can downsize the organization during this time. So we are currently looking at how we can reduce our staffing, potentially reduce our hours of operation and what the implication for service levels are. And, you know, just like many businesses are having to think about doing their business differently and maybe not in the way they consider optimal. The city will need to look at all of its operations and consider whether a service that we've been accustomed to providing at a certain level can be provided at what we would benchmark as a lesser customer service level for the next year or two to help us survive this period. Maybe I should pause here before I move on to the the next year, although the chart will look pretty similar.
I think that'd be great if you'd pause right here. Are there any questions? This is a lot of information to take in. Are there any specific questions? I know we're doing an overview right now.
Yeah, this is this is Kevin, just a just one thought that was just running through. Obviously, we're moving forward with the bridge and we have to, and that's good. We also are going to go through a period where we're going to be undertaking the various environmental mitigation measures that are required as part of our permit obligations. There's costs attached to those. Is there any way we can get some relief from regulatory requirements that may govern some of those projects so that we can defer them? Or are we just going to be stuck with the schedule that, for example, the regional water park is going to impose on us?
That's a good question, Vice Mayor Hoff. I think the answer is I don't know. Right now, the way those programs are structured, they're under the same time schedule constraints that the bridge itself is under and that we have to complete it and show progress in order to remain eligible for the reimbursement of 88.5% of construction. Now that said, it might be it might be that the agencies that have the power to make those decisions may be amenable to some of those projects being pushed out, and that's something we can talk to them about.
Yeah, and that's why I asked the question. I mean, you know, there I don't I don't know that it's going to make a huge difference in terms of our finances, but it could be an opportunity.
I do want, if I can, just make a note to because this, these are funded projects. And although I'm concerned about our challenge to manage cash and get us through this difficult time.
Yeah.
These are funded projects and in difficult times financially for the broader community in recessions, capital projects for government are a way people stay employed. So do you want to bear that in mind that that's something we do think about? Is that if we can manage a project financially, we are stimulating the economy and we want to also.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. And I don't disagree with that in the slightest. It's just it's a cash flow issue and and something to keep in mind in terms of managing our finances.
And I think we're all appreciative of that. This is a swiftly changing dynamic because we have no parameters as to when the economy will open up again and when we can get people back to work within our community. And it's we don't even have really an understanding of what the time factor is for that on a state level versus the local level. So I appreciate that this is constantly moving on discussion. So keep up. Is it? Go ahead and move on to the next. If there's no more questions at this point. Developing. Yes.
Yeah, Dan, I was wondering about one additional piece. So, you know, looking at this slide, about half our budget is police and fire. And I know we're with joint powers agreements there. And I was just wondering if you could clarify a little bit the communications or the planning around that, because I know you and Kathy are working on what you can control directly, at least that's been the focus of the discussion so far. But, you know, it's that collaboration with with Corte Madera and other other townships.
Would you mind if I hold that question? I have some comments planned on two slides from now, so it might be.
Go ahead. So we'll hold that one.
Okay. So not surprisingly, the slide for getting to July 1 of 2022 is similar, although I think options start to reduce. We'll already have been dropping on reserves and there'll only be so much left. There are probably only so many projects to push out. And quite honestly, I think we'll have challenges reducing our staff a whole. We run in the city in the general fund 30 to 35 funded positions at any given time. So we're currently, I believe, we have 30 billed positions. So were we to cut even three positions, we could reduce our workforce by 10%. So it's not a small issue for us and our ability to then operate the city grows increasingly constrained. But we will continue to evaluate those options going into the second fiscal year of sort of our two year plan. It certainly my hope that in that second fiscal year, we would start to see some normalization of our revenue streams. That's certainly the early messages we're getting from folks. But of course, the long term ramifications on the whole economy are still dynamic and difficult for us to forecast. So did want to identify some general goals that we as a staff or upset, I should say, upset the staff as we go through this. First, we have to remember that number one responsibility is to preserve the public's safety. And so I am one of the managers for the joint powers authorities that serve our community for both police and fire. What my fellow managers and I instructed the chiefs of the two organizations to do is to develop a plan where they could maintain their current level of operation without their budget increasing in terms of money being charged to member agencies. So what I mean by that is Larkspur's bill for the current fiscal year, 1920, for police services and Larkspur's bill for police services in 2021 needs to be the same. So the police chief has been working very hard. And many people know Kathy Orm is not only our administrative services director, she's the finance officer for the police authority. They've worked very hard to develop a budget strategy so that they can maintain their service level, they can maintain their personnel level, and they can preserve the public safety during this difficult period without charging Larkspur an additional dollar. And the fire agency is very close to presenting a comparable plan. And so I really want to acknowledge the work the chiefs and the fiscal officers of those authorities have done to find ways to move money around to be a little more creative in terms of a couple of their operations so that we can make it through this period and state to the public with confidence, you will still get the service you're accustomed to. As an added component of that, I do want to remind the council and the public that from local government standpoint, our maintenance crew is part of public safety. If there's a natural disaster, it's going to be our maintenance crew that's out there in the environment risking their lives to stop flooding or to help fire and help police control areas as they deal with a natural disaster. So at this time, we're running a little low in our maintenance division and we may need to continue to do that. But we want to maintain the levels we have there so that we can continue to serve the public. Additionally, we need to be more digital. We need to be more nimble in this new age than we have been. Local government as a whole has moved slowly in the area of technology. I'm very grateful to the council that last year you gave me the budget to commission a comprehensive evaluation of our technological abilities. It's not cheap to move forward and make those investments. Some of the investments that we were hoping to do in the next two years can be deferred without us hurting our plan to move forward and be more technologically savvy and more capable of serving the public digitally. But some of them do need to move forward if we're going to if we're going to achieve that goal. So that is one area where I'm hoping we will be able to preserve the money we've set aside or the money we were planning to draw upon to continue that investment, being thoughtful of our overall economic picture. And then I don't, I want to reiterate that while we are looking hard at our staffing levels and we are likely to have to make some difficult choices and decisions. We run a small staff and we invest heavily in our small staff to be able to do work across a broad array of subject matter. And that's worked very well for Larkspur. It's kept us a very financially stable entity for a long time. And so when when we we can't be casual about losing our investment in our people because that investment was significant. And I can readily articulate the return to the community that our investment provides. And so there are difficult decisions we'll have to make. But we need to keep in mind how valuable our our small staff is to getting a broad array of work done. With that, now discuss whoever you would like, and Kathy Orm is available to you as well.
Thank you for that presentation. It's sobering news and I'm sure we're probably going to. This is the beginning of a lot of challenging information that we can receive and not receive. I'm very concerned that the opening up of the businesses in our state too early may see a second wave. So very important that we keep really on track of this. And I appreciate that you're coming up with medicals for two years planning. That's what we're going to need to do. So I'd like to, this is high level right now. We're going to definitely dive really deep into this in our budget discussions in the next several meetings and also in our ad hoc committee on finance. But I'd like to open it up for any questions or discussion now from the council. And also remember Kathy Orm is available if you have a more detailed financial question. Anyone? Or is everybody just shocked at this moment? All right. I think we look forward to seeing more. Any any questions of Dan or Kathy at this high level at this point?
No, this is Kevin. I just I just want to express my, again, I hate to keep doing this because I've done it a couple of times during the course of this call, but express my appreciation to Dan and to Kathy for being realistic about the implications of our current general circumstances on on the city's finances. We have a history of being conservative in this city and being careful about finances, keeping our reserves maintained as best we can. And I think that that tradition is going to carry us well through this period. So just thanks.
Second.
Okay. Can you see us at all, Dan, or would you?
Yeah, I flipped to the screen where I can see.
So since this is a business item, is there anyone else in from the public who has asked a question or weighed in on this discussion?
At this time, there's been no public comment.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back to the council. If there's no further discussion, then we will move on from this business item.
So just just clear, we've got an ad hoc committee on finances. I think we're going to be having starting conversations tomorrow. Is that right?
Yes.
So and the role is to sort of help serve as a checkpoint for staff as we start to evaluate these ideas and help us understand some of your initial policy feedback so that when we bring it to the council, we're able to bring it in a package that's ready for you to digest and sort out. There are sometimes sensitive things that may come up from time to time that the financial committee may advise us on.
Right. So I think that's going to be a very helpful thing, both for for you, Dan, for staff and for the council to kind of have that ongoing interaction. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to participate in that.
Okay.
May I ask a question, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
In the information that's brought back to the council, would it be possible to have it framed in such a way that it looks in a kind of a low, median, high description so that we have a range that's being described to us? I'm sure that you're already thinking that way. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah.
Alternatives.
So you're asking that when the financial decisions are asked, they come in priority level of low to even high?
That we're being presented in a range.
So I think, at least in the last recession, the typical analysis we did, I wasn't here, but my last employer, is you take a service level and you identify how you provide it in optimal conditions, and then you sort of identify what sort of a medium condition would be to save some amount of money. And then you'd identify sort of what's the bare bone service level and what that would save you. So the council's making informed choices along the way. You know, what gets challenging, and it'll be, but we're prepared to facilitate that discussion with you, is, you know, our instinct is to leave as much as we can at current service level or medium service level, and sometimes that'll get difficult, but we'll navigate it. So I think that's probably what Councilmember Homer's alluding to as a methodology along those lines.
Yeah, that's fair.
Consistent with what I'm hearing for requests among other agencies.
Okay. So duly noted that, I think that would be a good way for us to sort of do a policy analysis in a more, in a systematic way.
I actually, I offer one comment too to the council that I, that Councilmember Hilmer's last statement made me think of. Some of you do sit on boards and commissions for the county and regionally, whose budgets have implications for our budget. And those budget cycles are right now. So as you sit on those boards, it will help, because I'm conveying and my colleagues are conveying our budget concerns to the managers of those entities. But it'll be helpful if the boards are also sort of saying, how slowly can we go in adopting our budgets so that we all have time to talk about what we can afford regionally?
I think that's very important. So, and that information should flow to you as readily as possible when it becomes available. All right. We have a lot of work to do as, as a council and with our staff in several months to probably a year, because I think we're going to be seeing COVID-19 be part of our everyday lives for a while. So I'd like to thank you, Dan, for that hard work and getting that out, and also your, your letter in which you ate your support for the staff and being very cognizant of how important our employees are for a well-run city. So if there are no more questions and no more questions from the staff, I think we'll, from the community, I think we'll close this business item, which leads us to adjournment. Would anybody like to move for adjournment?
I would love to. I want to keep, I want to keep this going all night long.
All right. So I have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I have a comment, Madam Mayor. I just want to express my gratitude and appreciation for all the city's staff and all those that are out there working for our community to stay afloat while we work through this.
Very much. Can I, I doubly echo that, that it's very important that we recognize that our first responders, our fire and police, are working 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week to keep the community safe and in conditions which they have never worked before, which is this type of fairly highly communicable virus. So I'm very appreciative of their work doing that.
Well, I also want to include our service workers, including the grocery store workers and all those others that are unheard of most of the time. They're keeping everybody's lifestyle going.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
So we're adjourned until May 6, and please reach out to me or to Dan if you have questions and interest that needs to go on the agenda, other than the ones we've been talking about. Good night.
Good night, everybody.